Good afternoon. It is three thirty PM. I would like to call to order a budget workshop and special meeting. Excuse me a minute. Meeting, call to order. Dr. Halsey, would you lead us in the pledge to the American flag, please?
I will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation and one God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dr. Ted, has the meeting notice been properly posted?
Yes, my certified was posted in accordance with the law.
Good, thank you very, very much. As I indicated, today we'll review the recommended two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen budget. And I'll turn the meeting over to our chancellor, Dr. Ted.
So, for the board, you saw you saw a review of this back at our workshop, so we've added more information and the specifics in the budget for next year. So, some of this is not new, and we have this divided into two parts. I'm going to give about a fifteen or twenty minute overview and of the general budget assumptions and kind of growth patterns that we're seeing. And then, most of the meeting will be run by Jennifer Ma, our CFO. And before we get started, I want to make sure you all know how much work went into this. And at the end of it, you're going to see the background of this when she finishes. But the colleges spend a lot of time preparing the budgets. And thank you, there's a, there's a lot that goes on at the college individually and so, and in departments. And so, we merge all that together with Jennifer's staff. And you'll recognize them when you come up. There's a lot of work that goes into this. The budget is really, really complicated. We're, our total expenditure this year will be about five hundred and fifty million altogether, something like that? Five hundred and thirty? Thank you. It's, we'll show you what goes on behind the scenes. Okay. A lot of this is just information, just a reminder. So, this is kind of the agenda, this is the agenda that we're talking about. Just a reminder what our mission is, and I go every year, I think, well, we need to put this in here or not. But I think it's worth reminding you what we're, what we're trying to do and what we stand for, especially if you want to take a look at the core values down there. So, so when we do the budgeting, we try to tie it in to our core values and our mission and our vision, and particularly our strategic priorities, which I'll show you in just a minute. This is the, I probably ought to rename this, that Dave Halsey put this in your top pocket. Really, this is, this is the way we do the budgeting. So, when we look at budgeting, what are we doing in these particular areas? And it helps us to get back, and this is, our strategic plan is wrapped around this. But, you know, the strategic plan is this long piece, and I know that we originally went through that. But we've just tried to simplify this so that everybody's clear about what our priorities are. And again, this is, this is the, put this in your, this is the three by five card that you put in your top pocket. So, just a reminder, how large, and I'm putting this in here because I know we deal with this a lot, but I just reminding you of the size and scope of Lone Star. Lone Star is one of the largest community colleges in the country. And you can see, we've got several other ISDs that are interested in possibly joining with us. So, we're about fourteen hundred square miles, but you know how long it takes to get from Kingwood to Cyfair, from north, south, if you're going up to Willis, all the way down to the city of Houston on the south side. I think the remarkable thing about what we're doing is our culture is held together. We've spent a lot of time on the culture, which we'll talk about, and how important that is to us. Because it's not easy when you have six colleges, soon to be seven. And you've got six, soon to be seven presidents who have three, at least three VPs. And then we've got associate vice chancellors and vice chancellors, and trying to get everybody on the same page. There's a lot of work that goes into that. And our group gets a lot better than it ever has, by the way. So, I'm, thank you to the presidents and the vice chancellors for, I'm not saying they're happy every day, but you, you keep those thoughts generally to yourself. So, thank you. Working here is a lot like being married, by the way, it really is, so. So, these are our campuses. Again, I'm just putting this up here to show you, just a reminder what Lone Star is, and this is what it is. So, we have these eight centers, and we have more coming. And these centers are, as you know, they're, all of them are state of the art, they're modern, we're very proud of them. There's not one center that I would take somebody to show, show them. It just depends on what part of town they want to come to and exactly what they want to see. But everybody does a great job keeping up their centers and the personnel, it's usually very positive there. And the students, that's what I care about, is that we take care of the students that are there. I wanted to show you this because I am, on my good days, I'm very impatient. And you can talk to Jennifer or some of the other people that are around, and I keep thinking that we're not moving fast enough. Then when I saw this, I thought, well, maybe I'll back off of that a little bit. This is what we've completed since January of two thousand seventeen. We have opened up either ten centers or ten new buildings or projects. So, we're, we are making progress, though, more than as soon as we open up one, I'm thinking, well, we need to get the other one open, and we need to get the other one open, and let's get moving here. Because we told the taxpayers we would do this, and we've had the growth to sustain this. Those are ten of them. Here's what we have, coming in nineteen, these are our priorities right now. Of course, Kingwood is at the top of that list. And we know we need to get Kingwood opened. And right now, for the fall, we're down four percent. And that's, that's just strictly due to Kingwood, Kingwood's behind it. I think once we get Kingwood fully reopened, then we'll be on a, a good track again. The police department headquarters is over at University Park, and we're revamping that. And we're going to talk to you about safety and security, because we're spending quite a bit of new money on safety and security. If I had to put one priority right now, I mean, Kingwood, clearly getting Kingwood open, but safety and security is our, our number one priority. These are some projects that are in progress. We've, we've been talking about the third bathrooms, and so, we will have this completed in December of this year, right? And Westway Park, the technology center, and I don't want to read all of these, but these are worth, that will be a fabulous technology center. We, a couple of them, Mario and I were in Houston yesterday, talking about the possibility of a cybersecurity, working with the city and private enterprise down at the technology, down at this center. The truck driving is very important. We already have a truck driving institute, but we want to expand that and have our own property. We're currently leasing from Spring ISD, and that, we've had several extensions on that lease. East Aldine will open in fall of nineteen, and we should be, we already started breaking ground on that yet? We're close, I know we are, okay. I think I told Art, if we don't break ground on this pretty quickly, a couple of us are going to take a shovel and go out there and start breaking ground ourselves. Let me just take these last two, the oil and gas services training center, we've had a series of meetings with this. We still think there's, our advisory groups would like for us to move ahead. There's quite a bit of training that needs to be done, and not very many people that can do the training. So, we're being very thoughtful about this, very careful. We, we have postponed this project, waiting for oil prices to go up in oil and, and gas. We know a lot of that's out in West Texas. We do the training for people out in West Texas, and we're doing it locally. What they're doing is they would do their training here, then send, send people out there. They're having trouble attracting workers. The Magnolia Center, we have been looking for land for some time. We've looked at a number of different sites, we have some meetings next week. We think we're getting very close, Rebecca, I know that'll make you happy, you're going to be in that meeting, but I think we're getting close to purchasing land in Magnolia. I'll keep you informed on that. So, we've got a lot, let me just go back to this, this is, we've got a lot going on right now. So, we opened up ten up to date, and these, you can see when these are going to be opening. So, eighteen and nineteen, I think we're going to have some, the remainder of eighteen and nineteen, we're going to have some good project. So, this is what's opening in twenty twenty. These are all things that were in the box. Keep in mind, from a budget perspective, we have, in our five-year plan, we know how much money it costs to operate these facilities, so we've put money in the budget. We've already, we've already got this worked out. We just came from another budget meeting, but we've got this worked out for the next five years. We know how much money we need to put in there. And then, of course, space three, Victory and Tomball. We're going to come back and do the renovation projects and traffic infrastructure and some of the repair replacements at the end of these projects. This is, this has to do with our growth and the way we see things. And I, in the other meeting, and Ken, this is what I was talking about, when we look at some of these numbers, the percentage, we would like to see those percentages going up. We are the college of first choice for nearly all of our, I think, all of our taxing entities and most of our service areas, high schools. So, more students come to us than they do any other, any other college. We would like to increase that number. Whether they come here for the summer or stay here a year or two years, we would like to increase that number. And I, that's been a focus of ours. Part of this is dual credit, we like the early high school model. And primarily, we just need to reach out to these students and do a better job of getting them in here. We talked to the superintendents, I have myself, we've had meetings with them. There are a number of students that are just disappearing, and we would like to see them. They're either going into the workforce, and we're not quite sure where some of them are going, but we would like for them to come, get, sooner or later, they're going to need an education, no matter what they do. This is just a reminder of where we are with everything, and this is the latest data that we have. But we are up among the leaders in the, across the country. Keep in mind, there are about eleven, a little over eleven hundred community colleges, so this is where we rank. Part of this is our size, but there are colleges that are, not too many colleges as large as we are, but we should be at the top. You can see the area that we need to work on is still African-American. I mean, we're sixteen out of eleven hundred, which would be okay if it was anybody except Lone Star. We want to be up in the top in that also. We'll have some more updates soon, probably early in the fall, over where we are with everything. And I'm looking at Quentin, because he's over this project. We transfer out about, I think, twelve or thirteen thousand students each fall. So, we've got students coming in, we've got the students going out, we've got students going into the workforce. We had about, I think, nine thousand students graduate last year. We have, these are the university center partners that we have at, here in the Woodlands and at University Park. We still want to expand this. Our two big partners are U of H Downtown, over at University Park, and then Sam Houston out here in the Woodlands area. Fair State is in Michigan.
They're offering, that Fair State?
That Fair State, right. They, they're offering an online degree, and it's a doctorate, and I know we've got Alicia's teaching, and you're teaching doctorate in higher ed. So, this is all of our work here, kind of cumulative for everybody. But these are the issues you're going to see in the budget that help us to accomplish this kind of recognition. I tell you, the thing that's important to me is that our employees chose this. So, when we're looking at the budget and what we do, we're, you're going to see in the budget that we're going to be focused on staff. We want to make sure that we're still paying competitive wages, that our facilities are hot knocks, that we continue to diversify. And we have a good, healthy, working environment. What I think is, if we have a healthy working environment, then we're going to treat students the right way, and it just perpetuates itself. And I think that's really important in our culture. We're trying to hire really good, decent human beings that work hard, and I, we're doing that. So, this is kind of an over, quick overview before we get into Jennifer's part. So, we are, we operate on business principles and practices, and I tell people when I go out in the community that Lone Star is a big business. We are in the business of teaching and learning. And, but if we don't have the money right, we just, we put ourselves in a difficult position. So, you can see, we're conservative on our estimates on revenue and expenses. As we look at our growth, we're, we're pretty conservative in our growth. We prepare for kind of the worst-case scenario. Hopefully, we don't have a Hurricane Harvey or whatever they call the hurricane in the future that impacts us the way this one has impacted us. We're maintaining our triple A rating, the twenty percent cash reserve, Jennifer is going to address this, but we are making terrific progress on this. We're, we're actually ahead of the schedule that I thought we would be. So, we're in really good shape financially, and we're going to stay in good shape. No surprises here, some discussions that we're having, but, you know, this is tuition and fees and local taxes, and we're going to come back. We have the budget philosophy committee, and I'll let them give you more information about that. But what we're trying to do is be a little more predictable in what we're doing for tuition and fees and the, the taxes that we would have, and having some fair balance there. What we're pretty clear about is, I don't see the state funding to measurably increase. I just don't see that happening right now. Community colleges as a whole are not growing, and that means that I don't think we're going to see a lot of extra money. And I, I was going to introduce him at the next meeting, but Jesse Ala is our new governmental relations person. Jesse, if you would wave. So, we're going to be meeting with all of our legislators and the lieutenant governor and the governor's staff. I'm going up next week to talk to the government, the governor's policy. I'm one of five community college presidents. But what we're particularly interested in, what Lone Star is interested in, is performance funding. If you're going to do that, put it in performance funding, so that we have some measurables instead of just giving money out. This last piece, we've already talked about a couple of times, but we're, we're trying to, we have intentionally increased our out-of-district, out-of-state and international tuition, so that we're not subsidizing that, we want them to pay equal, the same as the in-district students with the taxes that, that would be paid. And you've approved those increases. Well, these are just some of the issues we deal with. I mean, again, the budget is very complicated, it's very detailed, but these are the issues that we deal with all the time, every year, all the time. Starting with college needs, we're trying to give the colleges, and the colleges, when you see the budget, I think we're adding fourteen million in new money, and then we're re, repurposing. The colleges get about, about seventy percent of that money is going directly to the colleges, one way or another. If we have new initiatives, like it'd be disabilities or police, those, that money is going back to the colleges. These are just our fundamental assumptions right now. We, we are, we're going to be flat for the fall. And I think, once we get Kingwood open, though, I am really confident of this, we're going to take off again like we did before. So, what we're looking at right now is these ten thousand students. And then, our market share of the population has been running right around four. That's how we know, we know from every projection, and I'll show you another chart in just a minute, that there's about two hundred and fifty thousand people that are moving into our service area. And we get about four percent of that, we, we go at this different ways, but we're getting our information from the ISDs than we do, we have other studies. Just a quick review of this, and so, I show you this chart every year, it, it really hasn't changed, so you can see where the major growth areas are. And the pink, that's where the big growth areas are, and that's Cyfair and Conroe. The blue is the next, and you can see the ISDs that are there. We're generally in good shape. The areas that you see, with the exception of Splendor and, I can't see the other one, you were only, well, you see the ones that are, everything on here is growing, everything. But primarily, our taxing area is the one that's where they're growing. We know we need another map, we'll, we'll get you another map so you can see. I put this up here just so you can see, if it's, if it has a color to it, and they all do, then we're growing there. And that's where we grow students. What I didn't put on here, because it's not really in our service area, is KD. And we are attracting students from KD in large numbers. We actually have more students from KD than HCC does, even though it's in HCC's service area, not their taxing area. This is our projected headcount, and we, you can see in two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen, we left that flat. But I'm, what we're looking at is over a five-year period, where, where are we, do we think we're going to be? And we, I, I just think this past year was just a little hiccup in our growth. And this is where we are with this, you know, nothing new here, you've seen this before. But the trend on this has been that every year, the Hispanic population grows. It's been growing about one or two percent. As a percentage of our enrollment, the white population, Anglo population drops. African-Americans have been holding steady, and we think that's, that's the long-term trend, is it'll be sixteen to nineteen percent. I don't, the, the challenge for us is, the success rate for whites and Hispanics is pretty close. We still need to work on African-Americans, that's the, that's the challenge. So, when we're looking at the budget and what our priorities are going to be, that's, that's, we think about advisors and tutoring and the faculty that we hire and the diversity, which is, we, we continue to be pressing on diversity in our faculty, because our students, I mean, we're, I, it's just a matter of time before we're already there. So, the Anglo population, I still think, will continue to drop, it'll be below, below thirty in the next year or two. And we just need to reflect some of that in the, in our, in our faculty hires, a lot of that. So, that's my piece of it, that's just the overview. So, Jennifer's going to come up and give the detail of the budget ask, and any questions about that piece of it before? That shouldn't be any new information, that's just a recap of kind of where we are with things. We have, just for budget sake, we have an hour, roughly an hour, or forty-five minutes, before we take it, the next meeting starts at five. So, she's got about twenty-five or thirty slides, I think there's plenty of time for questions and answers and.
Okay, yes, so the first thing I would like to start with is just to mention that we do continue to receive every year, for fourteen years in a row now, from the GFOA, that, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. And I completely expect that we would continue to earn this. So, going into what we are including in the proposed budget that we plan to bring in front of the board for a vote in, at the August board meeting. So, first, beginning with property tax rates. Property taxes makes out up about forty-two percent of all of our revenues, which we will see later in a slide. But for two thousand nineteen, the proposal is to keep the tax rate the same as the current tax rate, which is ten point seven eight cents. And then, this shows the revenues generated from that increasing. And this is what shows you what that increase comes from. So, even if we keep the tax rate the same, appraised values are, we're projecting to increase at three point six six percent. Now, this does, this is remaining conservative. So, we have preliminary estimates from both Harris County Appraisal District and Montgomery County Appraisal District. And the weighted average of those estimates is at four point six six percent. But to give us a margin of error, we are assuming one percentage point lower.
So, while you're here, if the board, if you would take a look at the tax value, and look over there to the left, you can see that our appraised value is a hundred and, tell me, a hundred and ninety billion right now? So, we're very fortunate to be where we are, and we know that. So, but I want you to see the growth in the, the tax value, which, that reflects the growth in the area, which is why we've been growing, so.
Yeah, and that, so that actually reflects, it's at about a nine percent increase in Montgomery County, which makes up twenty-seven percent of our district, and then it's a three percent increase in Harris County. So, there is a large difference between the two counties. But Harris County makes up seventy-two percent of the, of our taxing area. So, that's what brings us to, the weighted average is four point six six. But to be conservative, because it's still a very preliminary estimate, we're assuming one percentage point below that, at the three point six six.
Did you say for Harris County?
Harris County was at three percent is the preliminary estimate of growth. Montgomery County was nine percent.
Jennifer, this is probably not that big a deal, but what was the impact of Harvey on property values in Harris County? Do you have a number on that, or?
Yeah, so that we don't know yet. What they give us in April is just their very preliminary estimates. We do not get the detailed certified rolls until August. So, we probably won't get an idea from Harris County of what specifically that impact was. And it may be difficult for them as well to estimate the difference between impact of Harvey versus just the natural growth that was occurring regardless.
Jennifer, we, board, we have Mike Sullivan here, who's here as a visitor, but just so happens, he's on the appraisal district. You want to, sorry to put you on the spot, but can you answer that question?
Don't worry, Mike, he, he does that all the time to me, so, he's not picking on.
And I know Jennifer from my days on city council, so it's nice to be back here. That's it, all of them, that's why I know these numbers so well. To answer your question, Doctor, the appraisal district has asked, has issued the estimated values, but as Jennifer said, the certifies will come out in August. The effect of Harvey has been changed somewhat, especially with respect to the values in Harris County for Lone Star, because Humboldt ISD recently passed a resolution allowing for disaster reappraisal. So, whatever values we had for Humboldt are now going to be reappraised, and that will be for two thousand seventeen. So, those property owners will get a refund potentially, and that will, of course, will come out of your pocket through Harris County Appraiser, excuse me, Harris County Tax Office. So, the, we won't know the full impact until the disaster reappraisals are completed for Humboldt.
Of course, I've noticed neither one of you are willing to venture a guess, okay, and that totally.
I'm happy to, because I'm not accountable for, if it's wrong. I think it's going to be flat to up for Harris County.
Oh, really?
I still think it will. The new construction, I mean, consider what you are seeing at Summerwood, it's your new center there, it, there's a lot going on still. Wesley Lake Houston Parkway is being clear-cut, literally clear-cut, for residential, multi-family and retirement. So, I think it'll be flat to up.
Okay, well, that, that works for me.
Yes, thank you.
Earlier today, I, I thought I was going to, I mean, Jennifer would not venture a guess, which I, after, after I made the call, I, I appreciate that. Perfect.
Excuse me, thank you, thank you.
But I think one reason we're conservative in our, when she puts three six six in there, we are conservative in our numbers. So, if it goes up or it goes down, then we could deal with that, so. We hope it goes up, but.
Okay. And so, just to put ourselves in perspective, this is the fifteen-year history of the tax rates for Lone Star College versus the state average. You can see for some time now, we have remained flat, while for a period of time, the state average was increasing, and it's sort of just in this recent year that you see the small dip, starting in the state average. But we continue to keep ourselves relatively steady at this ten point seven eight cents.
I, I wanted to point out that the average state rate is eighteen, and I think that's actually going to go up. Some of the, a lot of the smaller areas, the only way they can, they're not growing student-wise, but their cost, in their minds, anyway, their cost is increasing. And so, I've, I've been in the meetings, and some of them are saying they're going to raise their tax rates again, which is.
So, that's an overview of the property tax revenues. Now, here is the picture of the composition of all of our revenues. So, first, you can see two thousand seventeen, what the actual composition was. We were at thirty-three percent from student revenues, thirty-nine percent from local taxes. In the middle is showing you our current budget year, a fiscal year two thousand eighteen. The budget that this board approved this, in this past August, we had in that budget thirty-four percent of our revenues coming from tuition and fees and forty percent coming from local taxes. What has happened since then underneath that, on the bottom, is the current forecasted revenue. So, there, our tax revenues have come in pretty much on top of what we had projected. Right now, we are only forecasting a hundred and sixty-two thousand below budget. So, taxes is pretty much where we budgeted. Student revenues, however, we are forecasting right now, in total, at about eight point five million below budgeted. So, that student revenues coming in below budget is putting that composition now at thirty-two percent of student revenues, forty-two percent of taxes. And then, just sort of carrying that forward into fiscal year two thousand nineteen, with proposing a flat tax rate. And on student revenues, this past March, the board approved. And on student revenues, this past March, the board approved the increase in the differential fee and the increase in the out-of-district and out-of-state fees. But with those, it's still leaving the student revenues at the thirty-two percent in the proposed FY nineteen budget. So to continue to look at these tuition fees, this is the peer comparison for Lone Star College versus other big community colleges and other community colleges in the Gulf Coast area. And so this is how we compare to that peer group. And so this is where you can see the increase from nine hundred and eight dollars, this is assuming twelve credit hours, to nine, uh, nine hundred and twenty dollars with those fee increases that this board approved in March. So this is the in-district tuition comparison. And then here is the out-of-district. So this is where you can see the larger change, uh, from that out-of-district tuition that was approved. And then to show this is the out-of-state. So we did the same thing here. And remember, the intent of increasing these two fees was to close the subsidy that taxpayers are essentially giving to out-of-district and out-of-state students. So that overview of our two major revenue sources brings us to our recommended budget. Here is the outline of the revenue budget. What we are projecting is four point six million in new revenues coming in in two thousand nineteen. You can see three point two million, and then another two point one million coming in from those out-of, the out-of-district and out-of-state fees and the differential fees. So that's the increase in the student revenues. And then you can see five point six million and another three point five million coming in from the property taxes. And that's what gets us up to this four points, fourteen point six million in new revenues. And so the current two thousand eighteen budget for revenues is three hundred and sixty-five million. The, two, the, two thousand nineteen budget would be almost three hundred and eighty million in revenues.
What falls under that product service revenue?
The product service revenue? Uh, that's mostly our bookstore auxiliary revenues.
Is that leases as well?
Yes.
Okay. And we're conscious, right? What was that limit as a percentage or something? Wasn't there a limit that we had to be concerned about of revenue derived from lease agreements?
Well, it, it was.
I mean, that's our private use calculation.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yes.
The particular use of the facility that, ten percent?
Yes.
Each individual facility?
Right.
So it's not a income, it's a square footage, correctly?
That, even that is a simplification.
Mario's our resident expert on.
Thank you.
So then here is the expenditure budget, and we have it split by the, by the separate funds. Of course, the primary fund that we use is Fund Ten, is the operating fund. And what you can see here at the top is where we kind of have the, what we call the base budgets. And then we show the recommended budget additions. And Dr. Head mentioned that those strategic priorities is really how we look at the budget. So you can see, for the budget additions in Fund Ten, we have broken those out by the different strategic priorities. Uh, so you can see there, we are adding twenty-three point five million of budget additions. Now, the reason that doesn't link exactly to, to the new revenues is, of course, every year, we do have some one-time expenditures. And those gives us that capacity above just new revenues to have budget allocations.
So this is the slide that we started using, I think, two years ago. So, is it two years ago, or last year? Anyway, so that you could see each of the categories. So we used to kind of lump everything in there together, but we wanted you to see what we were doing for tenants like, uh, twenty-three and twenty-four, the difference in between those two. This, this is helpful to me, it's probably not helpful to the business people, but it's helpful to me to see exactly what we have budgeted in which category. And if we end up moving money from one or the other, I wanna, I wanna see where it was, what we had budgeted and what was being moved. And I think you want to see that too.
So I do want to mention that for this expenditure budget, our expenditure budget, you can look at the bottom, is about five hundred thousand greater than our revenue budget. We are showing a use of reserves, but this is not a bad thing, and I want to show why. Because in talking about our progress towards this twenty percent reserve goal, you can see that in FY seventeen, we ended FY seventeen at fifteen point five percent. And I, I kind of wish I had included sixteen, because I think that was closer to thirteen percent. So seventeen, we ended at fifteen point five percent, uh, cash reserves. FY eighteen's budget was to end at sixteen percent. And the FY nineteen budget that we're present, gonna present to the board for August approval is gonna have us end cash reserves at seventeen percent. However, the reason that the budget itself, just that the math of it, shows a use of reserves is because we are currently forecasting to end fiscal year two thousand eighteen at seventeen point eight percent. And a lot of that just comes from, the majority of it comes from initiatives that I'm even gonna cover later on, that we had planned to do this year, that ended up not happening this year. And so those funds, we are just going to use next year, because they're things we're still going to do. And I'm gonna cover that more specifically in the strategic priorities.
And on this, just, I don't know, I'm sure you guys explored it, and I'm not, I understand that we're, um, ahead of schedule on our reserves, so I'm not that concerned about protecting it at this point since we're out of schedule. But we're projecting a downtick in students, right, or enrollment?
We're projecting flat.
Flat.
For nineteen.
How much would we need to add in order to close this five eighteen gap? Would it be?
Less than a percent.
Okay.
I don't know it off the top of my head, but not.
Nothing significant or, it wouldn't be some huge miracle if we added?
No.
The necessary number of students to protect reserves?
No.
No.
Okay.
Uh, we, we're very conservative in our estimates. I think when Kingwood reopens, that's assuming we get Kingwood open in January, which I am assuming we're gonna get Kingwood open, then you're gonna see us take off again. And I, I just want to point out while she's here, I, there are a lot of people that contribute to this. The colleges have really helped, you know, we, when our, after the hurricane, we asked the colleges to, um, and System Office, to put, to give up money. So we cut some of the budgets, and then through our savings, but to go from where we were at almost thirteen five, is that what we ended with?
Yeah, I'm trying to remember if it was either fiscal year fifteen or sixteen, um, but I think it, just prior to the fifteen point five percent, the cash reserves was at thirteen.
To be at almost seventeen eight by the end of the year without, I don't think we cut any services. We did not cut any essential services. And to be at seventeen, and what's important about this is that we'll go back in for a credit rating back in, uh, early nineteen in preparation for the next, uh, bond sales. So we're, I mean, I think we'll be AAA rated. We've, we've, we're in a much better financial, um, situation now than we were then. We were, we were okay then, but now we're really in good shape. I think we're showing Standard Poor's and JP Morgan what we, what we can do, so.
So like I said, that sort of, one of the main points I want to make with this is that in August, when we bring the proposed budget, that budget has us ending fiscal year two thousand nineteen at seventeen percent, which is continuing to increase what this goal amount is. Like I said, the eighteen budget was set to end at sixteen percent.
Can I say one thing? I, I personally think we're at the end, what we do is we're projecting zero growth, and I think we need to do that. When, right now, we're down four percent for the fall. I, I think we'll be pretty close to even before it's over with, maybe even have an increase. Where I think you're gonna see an uptick again is in the spring. So we take a look at the entire year when we do our budgeting. So we're kind of hanging on for the fall, get Kingwood open again, get back on an even track. I still think we're gonna have more, we'll have more money coming in than what we're anticipating, which is where we want to be. We want to be conservative with the budget. No matter what we do, we're conservative with the budget. And, uh, Jennifer's going to explain why we want to take, if we're, we're ahead of schedule, based on our, our internal scheduling to get to the twenty percent, why we think it's important. You'll hear that in just a minute. We have a major priority that we think is important for our employees, so, without putting ourselves in, uh, financial, financial risk.
So now, yes, I do want to start to get, get into much more detail about what is in the expenditure budget.
Yeah.
You know, what are we projecting, based on our projections of student count, hours and heads? What are we projecting our, uh, class populations?
You mean class?
Number of students in seats?
So that's what we're assuming to be flat going into fiscal year nineteen budget.
I, I understand what you're saying there. But what I'm trying to see is what is the balance in, in our staffing for those students? If, if we do have additional students show up to take classes, do we, does that mean we've got to hire more people right away? Or can we fill up MPCs in the classes?
We're not hiring staff, we're hiring new faculty. But, uh, we've got that in the budget for hiring. But I, I, I want to point out that the growth doesn't necessarily mean more employees, because our class sizes are small.
That's what I'm asking.
Right. So the average class size right now is about twenty-three, but that ranges on, if our workforce, it could be ten or eleven, something like that, depending on accreditation and certification requirements, state agencies. But, um, I think with us adding the new faculty, we'll address that now. We've got contingency money in the budget. We have it built into the budget. So if we do grow, we can provide the colleges money immediately to hire new people, to answer your question.
Okay. And that money's not anticipated in, to be in, in our fund balance at the end of the year?
We've got it, we've got it in the budget, so if we don't use it, then it'll just roll over. I mean, we'll put it back in the fund balance, but, uh, we keep a, we have a growth contingency. And then we have five hundred thousand, then we've got another contingency of a million, just in case we grow. That sounds like the noise that I keep reading about in China and Cuba and something else, where, uh. Now I know who's causing it. So we, we've got at least a minute and a half, but that's, to me, part of that. I, I understand your question, but we don't assume that we're spending all the money in the fall. We just don't assume that. And so we're prepared, I mean, I hope we do, that's a nice problem I have that we can address and solve. We do grow more than what we, what we budgeted for.
So this does, at least, this gives an overview of the different categories of the expenditure budget. You can see with over half of it going towards instruction and another fifteen percent going to student services. So now for the, for the twenty-three million of budget additions, uh, that, this is where I want to go through the, but, just the budget additions, not the entire expenditure budget, but the, the new initiatives that we're funding by strategic priority. And you can see half of it is going to culture, and you're gonna see in a second what all goes inside these different categories. And the second largest being twenty-eight percent going for academic transfer and workforce program quality. So here we have for academic, um, that, I should say academic transfer and workforce program quality, six point seven million of newly funded initiatives. The first thing is new facility funding. Dr. Head went through earlier the construction projects and mentioned that we do, in the five-year plan, account for what those new facilities are gonna cost. So this three million is what we have budgeted to account for anything that we plan on opening in fiscal year two thousand nineteen. We also have funded for two point one million, thirty new faculty. And here for, in terms of college, so college growth, there's five hundred thousand that gets allocated, uh, to the colleges now. And then we have an additional five hundred thousand, and this is what Dr. Head was just referring to, the college growth contingency. So these are funds that we have talked about possibly giving out perhaps spring semester once we see if there is actual, it, growth coming in above the zero percent assumption.
So we put this in the budget, but if we don't grow, then we don't, the money's not there. Now, we have performance metrics, which you're gonna see in a minute, that's another five hundred thousand. So we give the colleges money for growth, and then there's performance metrics that you'll see at the end of the presentation.
So here, moving to student success, is where you can see the five hundred thousand for the performance metrics. So right away, beginning, you know, very beginning of the fiscal year, each of the colleges do get an allocation out of this total one million. Half of it allocated based on performance metrics, half of it allocated based on growth. So in addition, for other student success initiatives, the top one is beginning to fund Houston North. Uh, so that can, can begin to get set up and ready to go for fiscal year twenty. Um, and additionally, adding funds for marketing, for additional disability services, and then some other, um, supporting apparatus for, that supports student success.
Can I make a comment there about where? The larger we get, the more important it is that everybody, we need to treat students the same. If, I don't care whether it's Cyfair or Kingwood or one of the centers, disability services needs to be consistent across the system, whatever the guidelines are. And, and I think we're very sensitive to students with disabilities, but it just has to be consistent. And that means that we, every college needs to have a person dedicated to disabilities at the same level and kind of the, so all the decisions are kind of funneled back up for approval. That's what we're looking for, is you shouldn't be able to go from one college and get a level of service, and then go to another college and get a different level of service. That just, that doesn't make any sense. And I think you're gonna see more of this. I'd say the same thing with international. The Life Path is a little different. Yes, we want to be the same at Montgomery and Tomball, but, uh, uh, you're gonna see increasing in the years, I think, a more consistency in the organizational structure that we have. It's just gonna be important, the larger we get that we do things. With students, no matter where they go, they're gonna get the same level of service. So that's why you're seeing, when we put these in here, we're thinking, well, we need six people for disabilities, soon to be seven, and we need these advisors. And some of that we already have, but it's, at the colleges, they have multiple positions. So we create positions, we'll make sure the colleges are fully funded on that. I'm not expecting them to come up with the money, that's not what we're talking about here.
If you ask a question about that, um, I know that it's a very broad issue, I'm talking about disabilities. And I did see the website about how it mentions, you know, people have a question on it, so that's good, it's kind of a general, uh, uh. Is legal counsel, is, is, the department is always engaged in, in those kind of issues? Because I mean, a lot of it end up being new laws and new restrictions and, you know.
Well, he's actually driving a lot of these, um, when we have, yes, we talk a lot about this. I mean, there's two issues here. One is doing the right thing, and that's probably at the top of that list, the other is making sure that legally.
Right.
And a lot of these issues come to our attention because it is a legal issue, and we, uh, nobody does it intentionally. We're just, um, it is complicated, and the laws change. And yes, that's his job. And now with Jesse here, we'll have, you know, we'll be keeping, I think, tabs on a lot of that. We just want to make sure, I don't think anybody intentionally violates, I just don't. But we need people that, that's what they do for a living, they know what the guidelines are. And the System Office is to help, not to direct, but we, we just can't have one location granting, uh, services and another one not doing that.
Sure, we don't want to be reactive, right? I mean, we want to make sure.
That is correct, yeah, that's a good way to put it.
Yeah, that we actually have something set and, you know, that everybody understands how it works. I know that in, there's Title Six, uh, uh, of, right, uh, the, the, there's three, every three years you've got the reports and compliance and all that. Is there something to that, similar to that when it comes to, to, to disabilities, do you know? There is, and, and how often is that, or? General?
Just, Mario, just so you're clear about this, uh, this is not, this is just new money. We already have a disabilities.
Yeah, I know, I'm, I think I already went a little too far into it.
We spent quite a bit of money on disabilities.
Yeah, I just want, in, in terms of, uh, the reason I brought it up, just in terms of liability, that's all. That's all, we can talk about that.
Okay. This is just a piece, though, uh, we'll have some more reports on disabilities as we go through the semester, but this is trying to add to the services that we have.
So next, I mentioned culture makes up half of the new funded initiatives. And the two big pieces is this pay ban classification project for five million. This pay ban, this project was something that was listed up here when I did this presentation last year for the FY eighteen budget. It was funded, uh, in the budget, it was funded at a million. We had since, uh, was able to increase that to one point five. But just the, um, management of being able to accomplish this, it was decided that it was. it was decided that it was better to do this in beginning fiscal nineteen, and so that's part of the funds that did not get spent this year, but are gonna be used next year, and so it's a five million total that we have in this budget for this pay ban classification project.
Let's talk about that just for a minute, because this is really important, um, outside of the safety and security issues, which you'll see in just a minute. When we met in March, we, we, um, actually, since I've been the chancellor and back when we did the other... So we, we worked, what we told the staff was, we would get to the staff salaries, and we want to make sure that we're competitive and that we can attract and keep good people, and we pay people livable wages. We want people to come to work here, and what we looked, what we decided, and we hired an outside company, we've been taking a look at this now for a year and a half, two years. So we think we are, across the board, we're underpaying what we should be paying. Now, we're looking at this over a four or five-year period, and to get us up to where we think we should be, it's going to be a four or five million dollar hit every year, and keep in mind how big we are, we can afford it, but we want to do this incrementally. We, we, uh, we had, Mario, do you want to, I don't want to go into a lot of detail right now, but how many, how many employees are we talking about, eighteen hundred staff and then the part...
Uh, I mean, are they effective?
Yes. Eighteen eighty out of how many?
About four, uh, four times, five times, part-time, about four, five, six.
So what we're trying to do is changing the bands, and I met with the staff, we, we've been keeping them informed, but what we're trying to do is get our salaries up to competitive wages, slowly but surely. We can't do it for everybody, and we're starting at the bottom and moving people up, but then we, we've got compression issues in between that. So again, we're gonna be coming back in for the next four years or so, going, we want to keep moving this up. We're not trying to be the highest paid in the region, we're not, and we're... You want to tell them where we're trying to be, just generally, like you, because you're the HR person? Where are we trying to be competitive to, to be?
So we're trying to get, uh, basically trying to be competitive with the market, there's a lot of other colleges, a lot of people, so we want to try to...
So we're not, we're not trying to compete with the Exons of the world, that's not what we're trying to do, because we have, uh, we have holidays, we don't lay people off, we've got benefits, insurance, and we've got a nice retirement plan, so historically, our goal was eighty percent of the median, and trying to, who are you comparing that to, but we've been spending a lot of time over this, a lot of time, and we've gone through a number of iterations. The number of people impacted right now was based on the money that we thought we had available. And so that's a arbitrary figure in there that we put in there based on, as we were going through the budget, every time we could end up on money, we put it back into the staff component, so that's how this has gone up. And then we rolled the money over from the previous year because we thought that wasn't, we weren't ready, number one, for this current fiscal year. And we thought, well, we'll wait till the, this, starting in, this would go into effect October one, they would see a change. This is in addition to the two percent pay raise that we were talking about. So we would do that on September one, and then we'd come back on the staff that are impacted, and not everybody's impacted, so we've got to do forums and go out and talk to people, why? The only thing we're telling them is that we will continue this, this is an ongoing project. We told the faculty the same thing, we'll review at faculty salaries periodically, and we do the same thing with administrators, but I think the staff issue, we, we put this one, uh, we, I mean, there's only so much money to go around, so we, we went after the faculty compensation issues to begin with, and, because we'd already gone through that, the previous exercise back in two thousand twelve or thirteen, but I think we're ready to do that right now, so... I'd be glad to answer any questions you have about that, that's a, I, I think it's really important to the staff, uh, who are the, I mean, I understand why we're here, but the staff, uh, they're the kind of our bread and butter, and we need to make sure that they... I have to share a note with you about, um, staff pay and what, we can't solve everybody's problems, but I think we, when we hire people, we just have a commitment to them to provide the best we can, and that doesn't mean being the highest paid, so...
You know, you mentioned earlier, uh, Exxon, et cetera, at, at the, in the oil business, we use pay grade. Is there a difference between pay grade and pay, pay, what's a pay ban? Okay, all right, thank you.
We're trying to make that less complicated, though, when we did that previous study, I don't, what do we have, forty of those things, fifty, banned? We're trying to get this down, and actually, in one of the reports, is you went, normally, when you move up, like you go from a forty-two to forty-four, you make more money, well, the way the bans were, you made less money, and a couple of them, it was just, it's, it's not been the way we would like to see it. It was confusing to the staff, uh, uh, and really the administrators, so we reduced that down to about fourteen? Trying to make it easier for...
So in addition to that five million for this project, there's another four million for the two percent pay increase for full-time, part-time. That goes into effect September first, we did this, this, in this current budget year FY eighteen as well, and we have it again for FY nineteen. So this is, gives us a total of nine point six million for compensation related towards the culture strategic priority. But also within culture, we are also funding a two million additional for safety and security. So really, for culture, and this is where you saw about half of the total new budget additions is coming under culture, it's because we have eleven point six million in this proposed budget going towards these culture compensation and safety, security primarily. And then finally, under financial responsibility and accountability, there's another one point six million. Every other year, we tend, have to put in money for elections, and then we're continuing to move some positions off of being paid for by the bond funds, and then some other institutional support. So next, so that concludes sort of going through the budget additions by strategic priority. In those, we had mentioned the total of a million dollars that gets allocated to the colleges. Half of it, five hundred thousand, is allocated based on performance metrics, and the other half, five hundred thousand, is allocated based on growth.
Ten, ten percent of our money from the state, though, is based on performance metrics. So we took what the state has done, then we've added at least one African-American, and that, right, really, we don't have the data for that right now, but...
Right, we have not used that one this year.
So we're mirroring what is happening at the state, and what a number of us, number of the community college leaders are pushing for more performance metrics.
So first here is the allocation to the colleges based on growth in contact hours. We do split it separately, first by credit, academic transfer, and then by credit, workforce, and all non-credit. We do it separately, um, you get an allocation, if there's positive growth, it's a zero allocation, if it's negative growth. So the way we do this is, for example, even in the, in the case of Kingwood, even though overall it's showing negative, there is a positive growth in the credit, workforce, and all non-credit area. So this is where we are rewarding growth in these allocations, so you can see here what is going to each college out of the five hundred thousand.
One reason, Kingwood, though, this is running about a year, Kingwood's getting more money even though the hurricane hit.
The growth is probably one of the ones that's closest to being at, as up to date as possible.
And I'm hoping that she'll need the money in the spring, to use the money in spring.
So this is, for credit, this is measuring the growth of this past summer, fall, spring over the prior period for the credit.
Jennifer, can you go back to the slides, so for North Harris, the reason why it's zero or more dated is because, so, for me to understand, is there's no growth?
They haven't been, for the last three years, they've been declining, but if we could go, uh, and the reason it's carved up, and I'm the one that put the numbers in there, the five hundred, if you go to the next slide, though, you'll see how we're addressing this issue, because it's not all about growth, it is, we have metrics that you see here identified, and, and there are about, present, what is there, ten or twelve of those metrics? Ten, eight? And we, we just combined them all in here, so first time in college, developmental ed math and writing completion. So North Harris is doing a really good job over what we think is important and how the state is measuring us. So no matter what the growth is, I, I, I thought it was important when we did this that we all work together over certain goals for the system, because if we're not working on, if we're not working on persistence and completion, then we're not making progress on student success. So we have to reward everybody, uh, to me, I'm looking, I was looking for common values that we have across Lone Star College. Now, I'm, I know that they wouldn't, they have their own little projects, um, that doesn't sound right, they have projects. I was a college president, so I value those little projects, but we have, I know that they need money in the budget, they want money to do things locally and try, you know, it, it could be some new project they have in a faculty group, but I, I think these performance metrics are important. So North Harris ends up with money because they're working on the, they're making progress on the objectives we think are critical for the entire system. It doesn't do us any good if one college is making a lot of progress and working on something, and the other college is just ignoring it. And I'm not saying they do that, but that's what we're, what I think is, there are some incentives to money. If you put money to, if you work on the incentives that we value, then you get rewarded for it, and that's...
So what do we think is causing that?
Causing... They're dropping enrollment?
Yeah.
Are their performance, they're, they're dropping enrollment? Well, North Harris has been, um, in kind of a state of transition, and if you take a look at the entire community, and it's been, I think a couple of things, I mean, Gerald, you're working on this all the time. I have, you want to tell them what you think? Gerald and I have had a lot of discussions about this, so Gerald's...
Yeah, well, for, for this slide, for the performance, we're very excited to make sure that the students that we do have are successful, and so for the past two years, we've had the highest end performance, and that's because we're intentional with our counseling, we were the first with communities and schools, we work with our faculty, and they talk with our staff. As far as enrollment, that's definitely an opportunity, we're increasing the number of marketing to different areas. We know that there are, and so there are really no valid excuses, we, when you look at the pure numbers, they're down, but we're looking at where we are, and we have the highest number of credentials awarded, and a lot of those, if you look at the top two, it's Lone Star College, North Harris, and Lone Star College, SciFair. SciFair has the most amount of associate's degree, we have the most amounts of certificates, so our population, based on our success rates, are, those are going for shorter certificates, and so there could be some market reasons with the economy being a little bit better, but there are definitely some more opportunities to make sure. So we've been talking with the school districts, I know that we are growing in spring in Aldine ISDs, but they, uh, noticed a little bit of dips in some of the grade levels, and so we have a new superintendent coming up, and definitely the communication and collaboration, but I think in our area, we do have a lot of growth, but more so in, in industry growth in manufacturing than new homes.
I, I was just, when you look at, we're sixteenth as far as African-Americans. The concern that I have is, how do we overcome the fact that, though, you've got two school districts, seventy percent economically disadvantaged, sixty percent at risk, twenty seventeen. Westfield, eighty percent of them were not college-ready, twenty seventeen, so I'm asking, if these numbers continue to go up, that's not going to be good for North Harris.
Yes.
Regardless of what you try to do, I, I just want to make sure.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, and that's why, uh, Dr. Head and the board, when Dr. Head talks about outreach, we are focusing on high schools, but we definitely need to go more in towards middle schools and elementary schools so we can start that culture and the conversations, and like you and I discussed, uh, right now, when you look at some of the, some of these things could be wording, too, where the, where the only college that uses student outreach and recruitment, but when we talk, when we talk, some of the churches and community organizations may just look for words like outreach and community, and so what we definitely need to do is reach out to the younger age, uh, kids, but also with the community leaders. So, for example, Juneteenth, uh, the mayor has his event, so we'll have great representation there, and so it's more than just, hey, we'll have a conversation with you when you go to school, it's about making sure they have a culture of, of understanding and, and knowing that they're comfortable and that North Harris and Lone Star College is available and accessible and affordable.
I've heard of this.
The, the other question is, when you take into consideration, these kids are, are more workforce in that category than a full year. So are we gearing up for that?
Yeah, so one of the things that we're doing is working with Aldine ISD, I know with the Career Technical Education Centers, you know, they're, they're gonna be starting their Blansin Center, and so what we want to do is, not only do we have the early college high schools, when we have the CTEs, we're gonna try to get, we're gonna try to get as many of those, uh, dual-credit certified, so they get their, uh, high school credentials, but also get the, uh, classes they need so they can, uh, continue and get like an associate's degree with that.
So that's the reason we're creating Houston North, to address some of the issues you're talking about.
I, I understand that, but one of the concerns I have is, being an engineer, whenever you have failure, you always get to a root cause, and you have that well, well-defined, and, and, you know, and I'm sitting, you know, I'm concerned because I don't see a well-defined, you're making some assumptions, you know? So that's, that's all I'm saying. And some of the people have already said, Steve, I just thought I'd let you know, Jarvis, I can't, what's, what's Jarvis, uh...
Johnson.
Johnson.
Johnson, he, he specifically said, he didn't, he really didn't see the advantage, and, but that was just him talking. Now, he, he may know, know something that we don't, you know, he said, if you're not successful there, Quentin was there, and he said, what makes us think, what makes me think you're gonna be successful here? I'm just letting you know the, the thought process that's out there.
Yeah, I was there. Thank you.
No, thank you, and I appreciate everything that you're doing, you're, you're doing a good job.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
So you've got, uh, about ten minutes for questions and finishing the slides.
Perfect, there's two slides left. So, I mean, this is kind of to wrap everything up, just the highlights of what I just went through, I mean, so there's nothing new here, this is just the highlights of, of the major priorities in this FY nineteen budget is two million dollars for safety and security, five million for that pay ban study, another four, uh, for the two percent increase, we're adding thirty new faculty, and we just talked through also the allocations of this growth and performance funding to the campuses, and then also continuing to fund new facilities as they open, um, and Houston North coming up to address some of these issues just discussed. And of course, still sort of TBD as we continue to work through reopening Kingwood and continue to work through FEMA is keep, just keeping track of Harvey.
Questions regarding to two of these categories, are we not there yet, are not to questions yet?
We can meet a question, the only slide I had left was sort of the timeline from here.
If you could, we'll send you a note about this if we haven't, but we have a lot of dates for meetings here to, uh, so you can see things, remember last year, some of you wanted electronically, some of you wanted printed, so if you'll let us know, and then these other dates, though, are important, that we have a quorum for those meetings.
I, I mean, so really, just real quick, just to wrap this up, is from here, come July, we'll get everyone, both electronic and print, of the budget detail for the board to vote on that, August second at that board meeting, and then after that is when we begin the process for adopting the tax rate, where we have two hearings, and then adopt it at the October board meeting.
So the, on the previous slide, um, how, on the safety and security, and I'm sorry if I miss these things, how much of that is to infrastructure and how much is to personnel, and then on the twenty, two million for thirty new faculty, what's the, is that new hires, what, how's that break down?
The thirty new faculty is all new hire?
I'm, I'm sorry, not, full-time?
Yes, yes, full-time, uh, full-time new faculty.
New faculty are new hires, that wasn't what I meant, I'm sorry.
It's English, Doc, it's English.
And then the safety and security.
Uh, on the sa- safety and security, um, the majority of the two million is for personnel, there's a continuation of funding, um, there was thirty-four, a total of thirty-eight officers that we worked on adding this year, and we're continuing to fund that, complete the funding of that into FY19. We're also adding additional security at Kingwood, and preparing for additional security at Westway, um, and in addition, making sure we have funding for overtime and some campus security directors, and there is some equipment in here for tasers, um, some other equipment, and training, uh, uh, training refresh and refresh of vehicles and radios.
But the thirty-four new hire in terms of personnel, that's, that comes out of the systems budget, and then the system decides which college they go to, and they're not hired by the college, okay?
That is correct.
Alright.
So, but they're responsible, and they know this, they, every cap, every college has a captain who works with, uh, in the chief and deputy chief. So basically, if the college president wants something, for them to be over there instead of there, that's what they do. I will tell you, though, that every center we open, we hiring four or six? Four, either police officers or, uh, safety officer. So we want two people on duty at all times, two people at all times, so we don't want our officers by themselves.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So are you going to show them the, very quickly, we're, we're not going to show you the five-year plan, but I wanted her to show you what all goes on in the detail, not go through it, but, so this is the five-year plan, and Linda, this is what we're talking, you know, I mean, I don't think you've seen that five-year plan before, but this is, there's so much detail that goes on behind here, I just, um, this is like staggering the amount of time and effort that goes. Our budget is so complicated right now.
And so this is really where I want to definitely thank, uh, the budget team here at System Office, the, the VIPAS at each college and their staff that puts together the detailed budgets, and we will continue to be building those detailed budgets through July, right? I mentioned you get the electronic and print version of that detail in July, so we're working on that, um, both at System Office and at the campuses, um, and then also the System Office, the business directors, and the business managers in each of the vice chancellor offices, so there really is, and like I said, this was just sort of to be illustrative, to show a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes to.
Can you go, hit the detail or the chart data, one of the two, which one you're not in?
Oh.
So, not that one, sorry, uh, that one you were just on, so when we're looking at all this, and looking at funding sources, and as we were talking to you in the other budget, we're running this out till 2023, it's just, um, I, not because I'm the chancellor, it's just really sophisticated, it's really a good piece of work, so.
So, I mean, this is just to give a show, this is what everyone is used to seeing, this front page review where we kind of run through different scenarios and then the charts. But this is, like I said, for me to give a thank you to everyone who helps build all of this, because this just shows sort of what goes behind a lot of this, and then you'll get in July, the budget detail books, uh, that goes even more in depth than what you see here.
Hold on right there, so in the other, in the other meeting where we were talking about looking at state and taxes and all that, they can see how we have that factored in on the backside of that budget, and then, uh, just while we're here, Linda, you can see, trustee Good, you can see in 2022, 23, at our current rate where we think we're going to be in 22, 23, which, but that's artificial numbers that we put in there. So what we know is, if we hire fifty faculty a year for the next four years after this, that we're going to be at fifty-fifty, so that's the way we do the scenarios. So if the money, as we're talking about, if the money's there, then, yeah, that's, then we can, right, right. So when we put the scenarios together, though, we'll put fifty in there, fifty, right, and then you'll see how the budget plays out.
Okay, any other questions?
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
How long, Jennifer, did it take you to finish all this?
Oh, yeah.
And all the, and all the teams, all the colleges, the presidents?
Did we get up to forty versions? Thirty-seven versions of the presentation.
Well, how, when did you, I know we've been, we started talking about this almost immediately after last year's budget was approved, so when did you all actually start putting all the pieces together, four or five months ago? I know the colleges started back in March, or April, March, February.
February is really about when we have sort of our kickoff of budget season.
We, we have variations over the five-year plan, I'm not telling you I do the work, what I do is look at the five-year, and we go, what about this, what about that? But that started seven or eight months ago, to answer your question, so they're the ones doing all the background work, though, all of them.
You know, and Jennifer, Jennifer, I would have a question, but just compliment, basically, I've told you several times how professional that you are and et cetera, but I haven't had a chance to tell the staff the same thing, that you guys are doing one heck of a job, and I got to find another acronym, but, uh, keep on doing what you're doing, we appreciate you, and, and are, we are held in very high esteem, you know, throughout the, the entire community college system, throughout the state and the nation, so you make us look good, thank you.
Tell us their names, are they here?
Yes, so we have, uh, Tammy Cortez right here, uh, Maura Capper, Mary Anderson, we also have VIPAS, we have Richard Weldon, uh, Joanna Boley, Bridget Johnson, uh, and then there's Pat Sandoval there is in the back, and, and here's Ted Louis from Sci Fair, um, and so I also have Lorraine Fattini from my team, uh, so we, and then there's more, many, you know, others who also aren't here.
I like that spreadsheet, it's dynamic, it is excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, great job again, if there are no other questions, uh, the budget workshop and special meeting is now adjourned.